We're going to call to order at seven oh one, please rise with a bunch of allegiance and a moment of silence.
Next one to the flag of the United States of America into the republic where it stands.
Thank you, be seated. Item four is prosthesis and presentations. We have three that will be read into the record tonight. There was a presentation that we for the veterans coffee house earlier today. Like to read them into the record for meetings. So the first is for H Gregory Forbush. So H Gregory Forbush, United States Green Quarter is a Talon veteran that has been recognized for six years of service in the Talon Veterans Recognition Commission. And to honor and memorialize those citizens of Talon who have returned from active duty in the military. His duties on the commission were as follows. To prepare an appropriate listing of Talon residents currently serving in the armed forces to be displayed in the town hall. To work in conjunction with the town clerk to create and maintain an honor roll for display in the town hall of those red Talon residents who have served in the past conflicts. And to recommend to the town council the appropriate means for commemorating individuals, including but not limited to the commissioning of suitable memorial structures. To develop appropriate honor or memorial protocols for individuals from the town returning from active service. In the armed forces, H Gregory Forbush has performed all these duties at the highest level while serving as fellow Talon veterans of Talon. Now therefore, I, Stephen Jones, on behalf of the citizens of Talon, acknowledge the six years of service that H Gregory Forbush provided to the town of Talon to enhance. The recognition and importance of our Talon veterans and witness here whereof. I appear to set my hand and cause the seal of town Talon. To be affixed on this thirteenth day of December two thousand and twenty-two. The second citation we have before us is for Robert D. Lincoln. So Robert D. Lincoln, USA Army Green Beret, 10th Special Forces, and Talon veteran that has been recognized for his nine years of service. On Talon Veterans Recognition Commission as secretary and to honor and memorialize those citizens of Talon who have returned from active duty in the military. His duty on this commission was as follows, to prepare an appropriate listing of Talon residents. Who are currently serving in the armed forces to be displayed in town hall. To work in conjunction with the town clerk to create and maintain an honor roll. For displaying the town hall of those Talon residents. Who have served in past conflicts and to recommend to the town council the appropriate means. For commemorating individuals, but including, including but not limited to the commissioning of suitable memorial structures. To develop appropriate honor or royal protocols for individuals from the town returning from active service. In the armed forces, while Lincoln has performed all of these duties at the highest level while serving as fellow veterans of Talon. Now therefore, I, Stephen Jones, on behalf of the citizens of Talon, acknowledge the nine years of service that Robert D. Lincoln provided to the town of Talon. To enhance the recognition and importance of our Talon veterans. And with witness whereof, I appear to set my hand and cause the seal of the town Talon to be affixed on this thirteenth day of December two thousand and twenty-two. And our third citation of the citation honor and Mary Ann Trapp. To recognize Mary Ann Trapp for her years of service helping her husband, Richard E. Taub. Former Talon Veteran Recognition Commission Chairman, for the past fourteen years, they maintained the listing of all Talon veterans. In the armed forces displayed on the common town hall of honor. All these veterans were vetted, be honored and memorialized citizens of Talon who have returned from active military duty. Mary Ann and Richard worked with the Talon Town Clerk. To create and maintain this Talon honor roll that is presently displayed in the Talon Town Hall of Honor. They recommend those veterans to the town council for the appropriate means of commemorating these individuals. Mary Ann Taub has performed all of these duties at the highest level while assisting her veteran husband. That is all of honor. Now therefore, I, Stephen Jones, on behalf of the citizens of Talon, acknowledge the assistance of that Mary Ann Taub creates of the Veterans Recognition Commission. For Talon veterans, in witness whereof, I appear to set my hand and cause the seal. Of the town of Talon to be affixed on this thirteenth day of December two thousand and twenty-two. And just to be able to thank town staff for organizing these in pretty quick order, working with the current mayor and the ERC to get them drawn over so that they can be presented during here today. With that, we'll move to item five, public conditions, communications, public participation on any subject from the jurisdiction of the town council. With a two-minute limit, if you are on Zoom, you can hit the raise hand function or star nine if you're on a mobile device. Or if you're in the audience, you can approach the table and state your name and address for the record. With that, we have a hand raised on the Zoom screen for Claude at Morris. Oh, you are still muted, Claude, just to heads up.
Hi, everyone. Claude at Morehouse, eighty-nine Merlot Way in Talon. Um, I just want to say I had sent an email in a few days ago regarding the contaminated wells. Um, I have not received any kind of response or um. A notification of anything, so I want to read my email into record. So that it doesn't get lost in a correspondence report stating, oh, we received an email regarding wells. So my email said that I was writing in regards to the state legislature hearing that occurred a couple of weeks ago regarding the grant loan money application for clean drinking water. This was an important step to plead our case in maybe being recipients of some much, much needed funds. But my question is, is where were you? Only Tammy knew she all was there as our state rep. But not one person from Talon municipal departments were there to represent us on this issue. No one from the Water Commission, no one from town council, no one from the town manager's office, or the town manager himself. Other towns had multiple members speaking on behalf of their town, but not Talon. My utter disappointment is an understatement. This is, we have been strong along, long enough. Your absence at this hearing sends us a message that this has fallen to a non-priority issue. I have been told by the town manager that this is a work in progress. Looking at what will be done in future applications of road salt. That's all fine and good. But sorry, but the work in progress I'm interested in is what you're going to do to our already contaminated wells. That grant and loan would have been huge to bring in public water and no one was there. I wouldn't wish to sway a life on anyone, living out of jugs of water, which we do appreciate getting. But because your friends and neighbors don't have potable drinking water for six long years now. Talon residents have been living without a basic human need and in a negative quality of life situation. It gets talked about and then crickets. I think Talon missed a huge opportunity by not attending this hearing and how much longer can and should we endure? I very much would appreciate that this issue get resolved soon, or as, at the very least, a solid plan moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Claude. That's actually right. Are there any other members of the public that would like to speak? Do you would like to do so? You can raise your hand with the raise hand function or star nine. All right, going once. Going twice. We are on item six, which is the hearing items. Item six point one is consideration of resolution for supplementary appropriations. For three bridge improvement projects to be funded a hundred percent by state and federal funds. So, you can wait to hear Brian, if you want to give a quick summary.
Um, so we have some, it says bridges, but really it's culverts, but uh. We're, we're getting some funding from uh state and federal, or at least federal funds through the state, I believe, if I'm accurate. Uh, and then the three are down in the industrial park area bubble and such, not down that way, but do you have anything else?
Yeah, and it's a hundred percent reimbursement, which is usually, usually the town has to pay the twenty percent for the design. So it's kind of a good situation for us and my understanding is like that the bridges won't be done until twenty twenty-four. Because they've gone to the design phase and public hearings and everything.
Any other questions from council members? Seeing I entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
So.
So if I counsel Murray, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman, you're Councilman Uchio, all's in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, that is unanimous, so the public hearing is now open. Anyone in the public would like to speak on the hearing item, looking to do so. All right, going once. Going twice, I'll entertain a motion to close public hearing.
So.
There's a second.
Second.
Second, I also need to check, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is it unanimous? Any further discussion on the resolution? Just good work, glad to see we're able to get a hundred percent funding and even get that twenty percent design match.
Yeah.
Match with the stating, so. All right, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution as outlined in six point one.
So.
My Councilman Murray, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Uchio. You know, for discussion, all's in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, that is unanimous. That brings us to seven A reports of boards and committees responsible of the council. So last week, actually on the eighth, actually, sorry, it feels like the weeks have gone by. Um, we met for a special meeting for the firehouse subcommittee. We did vote unanimously to approve. The vendor for the bid for the firehouse, it was the lowest bid, but I meant all the parameters, CHA and for. For reference checks, I think it was Lawrence Bernoli, sorry, that's my name. So that was unanimously approved. We are canceling this week's meeting on, or next week on the fifteenth, and we have established our twenty twenty-three schedule, so. With any questions regarding the firehouse project, can certainly ask them here. I think the minutes were just published today, so.
We're going to be having a contract signing on the twenty-second.
Okay.
The court to move in this project.
Yeah, definitely. Okay, that brings us to seven B reports of town council liaison. I'll start with my, also Murray.
Sure, I attended the Board of Education meeting on the November thirtieth. There was a robust discussion about next year's school calendar. Whether school's going to start before or after Labor Day, so if anyone wishes to give their input, I'm sure the board is. Being flooded with, paired to an opinion one way or the other on that issue. Um, the board made some administrative updates to names on some accounts and programs. Um, they discussed updating a few board of it policies to be consistent with recent state law changes. They proved their goals and the only item that really touched upon town council was a mention that the board of that did make requests. Uh, for the capital improvement plan, which. We got today, so I'm sure there's board action in clear. And the Agriculture Commission was canceled, doesn't meet again till February.
All right, sounds good, Councilor Khan.
Uh, it is, it is here at the last week and then we talked about empty spaces in Talon. And then this thing and uh. About the housing and basically that's what they did and that's what they do all the time, so that.
Thank you, sounds good. Thank you, even.
Yes, planning and zoning met last night. Two agenda items, first one was farm ciderie discussion to include breweries. Uh, any regulations around, around those and for anybody who would want to uh open a brewery or a ciderie, uh, very extensive discussion. A lot of detail will be included in the minutes when they get posted. Second item was a discussion of the P O C D and its implementation, and again, a very extensive discussion on that. So anybody who has any interest would be. Uh, I would, I would direct you to the mess to get more detail on that, and that's it.
Thank you. I have the Conservation Commission last week, they had a pretty lengthy discussion about event registration and. Any insurance or liability issues that they might have in case of unmerely injured, so. I think they're looking for some advice from town hall and the town attorney about having a form and what is applicability would be. Um, they discussed forest management plan, uh, they're expecting a revenue of eight thousand dollars from the harvest on the Parcia conservation area. Uh, but I believe based off of prior conversations that go back into their revolving fund for future uh harvest plans and conservation area management plans, so. And that was it for me, the wire cushion meets next Monday, thank you. All right, Councilman Uchio.
Um, I had a PCC meeting, um, they were pretty busy trying to get everything up for the tree lighting and all of that, so making final decisions and such. And um, obviously very successful, you know, um, that's it.
All right. Councilman, you to check?
So I'd say there was a lot of um. A lot of young kids there, like a lot of, it's like a lot of young families, yeah, there always is.
Yeah, that was really nice, but yeah, once again, did a great job.
Yeah.
Um, it's that guy in the red suit, you know, bringing him out, you know, that's caught up by the police and then, yeah, hold on, like that. Um, so John and I were at the Talon and the Hope Task Force on December fifth, that was a pretty quick meeting. Um, basically approving next year's calendar and then talked about next month, they're gonna, some two-step thing, right, John, about presenting the Whelan. Um, results and going from there, so those are going to be at the regular uh, Metta Hope meetings. And then, let me see. And then last night, the, um, the advisory board, Talon Recreation Advisory Board, met last night. And talked about all the stuff they're doing. They had between five hundred and six hundred people at the Halloween. Um, acted house here in the town hall. And they talked about some of the capital improvements, but she got on a K D sandwich, got budget, which I believe. Um, Bruce talked about the replacement of the turf field, construction of the pickleball court. And a new multi-purpose field were submitted to the town manager. Um, and that's, and I believe the winter program went live last night, I think Bruce said. So that should include the new breaks for people when they sign up from the upper part, so. Think he's pretty excited to see what those numbers are.
Have they been advertising that, Tom?
I haven't seen anything.
Facebook post on it recently, but I don't know if it's been e-blasted, so it might be good to get that out.
I asked him, I don't, I haven't seen the book that usually comes in, and I was looking last night. The fall program is not up yet, but he said it should be up there soon. So I did question that, um. And then next week, we should be meeting, our first subcommittee should be meeting, um. Assume there's not a whole, be a whole bunch of capital items on that.
There are some.
Yes, yeah, so, but that's all I have now.
That sounds good. That brings us to eight new business, so eight point one is a consideration of a resolution to declare various equipment obsolete from the Board of Education. And it was like we have with this Dr. Willet today, as well as any questions. Otherwise, I'll kick it off to Brian.
I know, that's, it's all stuff that uh, Dr. Willet has said is of no value and they want to get rid of it. Many questions specifically to him.
All right, are there any questions from council members regarding the list? If you have the packet, it's on page seventeen. All right, being none, I entertain a motion to approve the resolution outlined in eight point one.
Almost.
There is second.
One second.
Second by Councilman Uchio, all those in favor or any discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That is unanimous. Brings us to eight point two, which is consideration of a resolution for the twenty twenty-two Steve Grant Award for the renovation or replacement of the community test courts in the amount of five hundred thousand dollars. And I believe Brian said this is kind of one of the final checks for uh being able to process the assistance agreement.
Yes, this is just a resolution authorizing me to sign off on behalf of the town so we can move forward with the project.
All right, are there any questions from council members? All right, seeing none, a motion to approve the draftless resolution is outlined in eight point two.
Make the motion.
So I'm going back to me to check, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Murray, you know, for discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That is unanimous. Eighty point three is a consideration of a resolution to approve the necessary funds to ratify C S E A, S E I, local two thousand and one. But their bargaining agreement for the period date, dated July first, twenty twenty-two through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
Oh, this began in June of twenty twenty-two negotiations um with town staff, town attorney, our labor attorney. Um, and the union, I believe, um, that it's a fair result with positives for both sides. Um, but I'm here to, Mike and I are here to entertain any questions if there are any.
Are there any questions from council members regarding the? Resolution?
Just thank you for all your hard work. I'm glad to hear that. The union members are happy and management's happy, that's seems like a good outcome.
Concur, thank you. As well, and give our regards to Pat, so you're going to make it tonight, but obviously his longstanding relationship with the town has been beneficial for, for us, so.
I will, I will do that.
Thank you. With that, I entertain a motion to approve the resolution is outlined in eight point three.
So.
There's a second.
Okay.
All right, seeing note for discussions, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, that is unanimous, which brings us to eight point four. Considerate, consideration of resolution to amend the membership of the firehouse subcommittee. Uh, I shot over an email to Mr. Foley about all the good work Megan has been doing and communicating with Bev and. I've recommended since they were added to the building committees. For the H back projects that are pending, that they, we amend the, the makeup of the subcommittee to include them as well. They could also film for Bev and that they were for Alan, since they were pretty closely together.
They can talk.
And also has voting power.
So this makes sense, she's doing a lot of the uh work with it, uh, to begin with, the assistance of Bev and a great learning opportunity. She was not here when this committee was put together, uh, it, it just makes sense all around, she's uh fine with the additional work and certainly hasn't shied away from one stitch of work yet, so. Um, that's where we stand.
Are there any other questions or comments from council members? All right, seeing that, I entertain a motion to approve the resolution outlined in eight point four.
Yes.
Would you mean by that, Councilman Uchio, is there a second?
One second.
Second by Councilman Uchio, you to check. You know, for discussion, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is unanimous. Brings the eight point five, which is a review and discussion of the town council goals that were set, summer twenty-eight, twenty twenty-one. So as you're talking, Chance, Brian, there's definitely a lot there that you wrote it down and shared with us in the community, so.
Uh, this, so these, these top, these goals were created while I was a state employee and not even considering um a change of career at that point, so. But I, I'm very happy with all of them, if you'd like, would you like me to run through all of them as fast as I can?
Then you can just give a brief summary and then we can uh bounce back and forth if there are specific questions.
Okay, um, so, so let's uh right out the gate on a, on a strategic plan, I agree with uh the need uh for that in the town. Look at the, the mission and vision statements, why they're important, I believe actions are a lot better than signing onto some credo that is virtually too little. Um, I, I believe in action and leadership, but I also understand the need uh for that as well and in established credibility. Strategic plan is a little different, I think it's uh something, something that we should look at, I discussed it uh. Uh, with Mr. Wilkinson uh on a couple of occasions, and it's something that I can, I can look at and, and try to look at what other towns have done well. Um, and, and pick up and learn from that, but happy to look with that, um. Employee retention, uh, it's, it's, you know, it's difficult in an organization of this size. You have, you, and, and you know, we have some very, very long time uh employees here with, with incredible knowledge that is difficult to impart all that on one sitting in this room right now. Uh, they will not be here forever, but we are trying specifically uh with Bev to, to impart her knowledge onto someone new. There are others uh that are going to be uh not so difficult, some departments have great, um, we have a deep bench and others not so much, but uh we're working on that. Uh, we've done a lot, as you guys are aware, the um. The staff raises and some uh retention, I've, I've watched um. In Hartford, I had the benefit of watching the talent retention uh just be. Not handled very well and they'll lose some great people uh as a result of that and then not go well for the administration. I believe ARPA is moving along fine, we've, I, we have been responsible, again, having the benefit of seeing how other cities have done bad with uh grant spending based on votes. We are doing it based on, with a committee, um, and I think we've done some good things and some more things coming that, that'll be good for us fiscally. Uh, our triple A bond rating speaks for itself, Lisa does a great job, our, our policies. Uh, really seem to be the strong point, just through, we have very strong financial management policies uh that really help us get through that. Um, regional, the IT regional stuff, I'd love to explore other regional opportunities, it's something we take slow, but the IT couldn't work that, couldn't be working better. Um, and the, the dog pound, we've actually engaged in some regional efforts that have been uh to a profit. Um. You know, you look at the, you, you guys, you, you'll have the capital improvements plan if you don't already have it. Uh, some of the things that I'm looking at is, is, you know, it seems that there's been spending habits over the years that haven't been um great or um. More investigation could be done, uh, and I'm trying to do that, I certainly have done it with some of the fire apparatus, I will do that with, um, I did a granular with DPW, I'm not the person to decide. I would, I would look to get a consultant report uh to move forward there to see uh how many trucks I've been told, you know, that I've heard from citizens that there might be too many, too much apparatus, I've heard that maybe more from others. Um, I'd love to dig in on that and, and really find out, but again, that would be something uh that I would want, I'd look to hire a consultant this year uh to do. The fires, the fire stations, you know where we are, I provide an elaborate report, please uh look to those. Uh, in my, in the, the goals that I turned into you for the specifics on where we stand with the fire stations. Um, needless to say, we just, I, I decided when I got here to slow down, I wasn't, I'm not sure of the exact uh need for it. The foundation issues, uh, the crumbling foundation issues has gone, I believe, very well for the town, uh, just with that, uh, an issue bubbling up. With the condo complex down behind Johnny Appleseed there, I can't think of the name of it off the top of my head, uh, with a bunch of those coming in now, but uh we have. Thank you, uh, we have others, uh, we have others coming off the books, so uh it, it really seems like our, our region's moving towards the recovery, thanks to the great efforts. We just have to make sure we maintain support uh for that uh at, at a state level for, I would say, a decade or so, uh, or longer depending on how this goes.
Um. If you want, we can uh break up and let council members ask questions if you want, and bounce back to.
That's fine, yeah.
And that's fine, I can talk all night if you'd like. Right, Councilman Uchio, your hand raised?
Yeah, um, so when I read through this, I had a couple of things, just a couple of um points that I wanted to. Kind of get a little more information on. With respect to what you just said, um, getting a consultant to look at the DPW um fleet and all of that. One of the things that's on the ARPA is uh heavy-duty dump trucks used for plowing and park maintenance, so I'm. I'm wondering if there is appetite right now to put that off until we get the um consultant review, to see.
It's close, Tammy, um. It's close, I, I don't want to cut. The last place I wouldn't want to cut is plowing, let me put it that way, of all the, of all the functions, um, as it requires. All of us to obtain our basic needs and for emergency services to respond, uh, we know we have twelve routes. Um, we know what our staffing is. I'd have to look at that a little closer and I'm glad that you reminded me, so I will for our meeting next week. I, I did not bring my folder with me where I have my notes and crayon on.
You know, the specifics, just, you know, high level.
Yeah, all right, thank you.
Um, and then in uh evaluation of the public safety needs, your last sentence is one that is intriguing to me and I'm wondering if you can maybe elaborate on it a little bit. You said, um, I believe a regional approach is something to watch for in the coming decade.
Yeah.
You're specifically talking between for the, um, I don't know, that the fire ambulance and the, the state police. Um, I know you looked at the two thousand and eighteen consultant report.
Yep.
Which was pretty inclusive in how much it would cost to have our own police force and all that other good stuff. Um, and also looked at partnering with possibly Vernon or Coventry, which again was a significant uptick in cost. Um, I think the state police do a good job, but I'm wondering what you mean um by a regional approach, might be something to watch for.
Uh, the, the, the price of the state police fluctures, fluctuates greatly, um, while we are very fortunate here to have a resident state trooper that is. Um, and I, and I've seen many or most of them, the, one of the best.
Yes.
Um, I, I do think the future, I read the report, I disagree with much of it. I believe my, the thumb was on the scale for that in regards to it's landed very heavy towards retaining that uh resident trooper, I don't know about the cost of the savings, I can tell you this. Been here six months, I haven't talked to a sergeant or a lieutenant, I don't get a crime map, I don't know where crimes are. I don't have any information on anything to evaluate, any sort of crime patterns, uh, anything like that. Um, so, and, and when I, where I came from, you know, a weekly comstat meeting on every single thing that you, you. We just don't have that, and I don't think that's a state, I don't think that's a resident trooper issue, I think that's a more data. And crime analysis issue at a, at a higher level among one of the other things, but I, I cannot tell you if we have burglary patterns, where they are, where they've been. Where our numbers were ten years ago, where they are today, where they were last month, where the stolen cars are, I just, I have no evaluation of that, I don't know if anyone evaluates that. Um, so I would look to other options and costs, obviously, and, and public safety. It's more of a philosophical approach, that is not a year one thing for me, uh, but it's something to consider uh down the road. You know, there, it's an expensive police service that we pay for. I don't know what it'd be, I do not think we should have our own police department here in the town, certainly we can't afford it. Um, but I would look towards sharing with others, the same way I can teach. I don't, I don't, I, I don't think we'd be any happier as, as the town staff and the IT we share with South Windsor. I don't, I don't, I, I don't think we'd be any happier as, as the town staff with the IT we share with South Windsor. Um, we could look to that in the fire. We could look for that in the ambulance. We could look at that in the police. So, uh, certainly not anything I would turn a blind eye to.
So I'm going to ask a really stupid question. Have you asked for that information?
Sure. And I get that block. Same block every, this is the amount of calls. This is the, this is the, yep.
Which I think is kind of the thing that we get from the fire department also is literally just like, uh. You know, here's the stat. So I think it's worth it to kind of push and say, this is what we would like to see from the services that we're providing.
Knowing, knowing the answer to that, though, where I came from there, I know there's not going to be a professional comstat package produced for a town, which I would like to see, which everyone would like to see. You know, here's a map of the town. Here's a star world of car breaks for the last year. Here's a star world, you know, a heat map, you know. It helps direct services. It helps direct a patrol. Where are the, where are the, all the speeding complaints, the highest amount? Um, there's just a way to professionalize it.
Yeah, I think there's probably room there for that. Um, in the, in. Same thing on the fire side. I know when John provides his stats. Um, I started pushing probably about a year or so ago to get the mutual aid numbers because. While mutual aid is a great thing when we're mutual aiding every call in Vernon or ninety percent of calls in this town or that town. The talent taxpayers are paying for fire services for other towns.
And it seemed like we. I told you, I've had conversations with other town managers, um, where they said, we don't need to buy this or that because Talon has it and they come.
Yeah.
Um, obviously.
Or Talon will sell it and we can still do it for ten more years.
Obviously, that's something I looked at almost immediately when I got here and I'm trying to remedy.
Okay, so that's, I, I'm interested in that. Public safety is.
Who includes, I'm leaning on other town managers to, and as is John, he doesn't. I promise you, he doesn't love responding, uh, to certain towns for certain things. Uh, he's made that clear. Uh, so then I am leaning on other towns to pick up, um, and without naming anybody specifically, um, ambulance stall.
Okay, all right, um. That's good to know. So if there's going to be continued to work on that, I'd definitely be interested in, in, I think for sure, we would probably all be interested in hearing on that. Um, on the crumbling foundation, that's what we got up to. Um, I'm familiar with the bill that's rec that's talked about on here, the act, uh, concerning the crumbling foundation. Concrete foundations, I'm. Interested in what the town, because Talon kind of wrote that bill.
Yep.
Um, Jason was a main, um, touch fighter for that one there. And there's. I want to make sure we understand what this is because in here, this is not what necessarily came forward. This says, um. Due to faulty foundations that were still receiving reductions, even though they had settled lawsuits. Um, and their insurance companies. So that piece I think is pivotal. That we understand if there are a certain amount of homes in town that have filed insurance policies and gotten an insurance payout, but are still on the rolls. The technicality in the issue here is the assessments are based off the value of the resale price of the home. So. I want to understand what you guys are. How. How it's impacting the town? How many do you think it is? And, um. What's the plan of action for that piece?
Uh, and the, I think the plan of action, they go work backwards is, uh. I think at a legislative level of policy change, not allowing people to make that insurance claim, take the money and not fix it and not, and, and keep riding off the tax break. At, you know, I think he explained about like an, an average house, three thousand dollars a year or something is, is what it costs us. A handful of houses at best is, is how it was explained to me, but obviously created frustration for him as it is a. Um, loophole that's exposed itself, an un, un, unpredicted loophole.
Okay. If you have any kind of data on what that impact is.
Happy to get that for you.
Okay. And that brings you up to, uh, water concerns. If anybody else has any other questions, um. He didn't go there yet. I, I have more questions, but he hasn't played. I don't know if you want me to continue going or, all right. Um, on the historic district, people with disabilities. On there, um, as you mentioned in here, we had the meeting, we looked at it and all of that. We talked about, um. The preliminary financial commitment. Can you give us a little more update on? The kind of plan of action. Where are we in a plan of action for deciding what we're going to do there? A little bit of here about, you know. There's this, there's that, but we've been missing that for about.
Six years.
That many years.
Yeah, I hope, I hope to end that. Um, right now, we're, we're heading towards putting a sidewalk on the Talon Green, not taking anyone's property, not, not. Take, getting rid of the stone, not adding a separate, uh, sidewalk to put to make the green more accessible. We talked tonight about. Uh, the great events that we've had on the green. I want, um, everybody to be able to come on. The green, the grass and enjoy it, um, whenever they want. Uh, I will work. There's legalities. We're working with an attorney, uh, with, with, uh, Rich Conti. He's done some research already. I don't know if you've seen it in the, uh, to get the bills, but. Um, he's done some research. We want to do a little bit more, uh, on the shipper side of things, but, uh, we, we look to put. A walkway down the green. We haven't decided on material or, or. Whether concrete or otherwise at this point, but it's, it's probably leaning that way, but I would like a cobblestone, uh, look to it. But again, that's, that's my own personal.
Do you do like that, the, um.
Stamps.
That's what we're looking for.
Um, we, I want to incorporate the veterans in there. I've, I've walked the green, uh, with the People with Disabilities Commission. Uh, Chair, I've walked the green with the veterans, uh, with Parn, Mr. Maynard, uh, and. That is the direction we're having. My. It's not in CIP yet. Uh, my, my goal is to have it engineered. Share it and then possibly get it, uh, through ARPA. We did the. Cross Farms Walkways, which are extensive and. Way more technical than a straight run down the green, as you saw, twisting up hills and such, uh, to ADA. Uh, we did that for ninety thousand. We had budgeted to, to Hundo, so we've got it in under budget. I would have loved to have used that savings, but that would be improper. Right? So.
Got to read, got to read this.
But that'll give you an idea, uh, of ballpark of the cost alone. We did stamps. It would be, uh, obviously, you know, I don't know, a lot more, but. Significant cost more.
Uh, yeah, obviously. Kids, I'm sure we can kind of just walk there and, you know, run, uh, sing over it.
So that's, that's where we stand for that.
Okay, um, and then the next one on here, you just kind of touched on that. I was hoping you can give us a little bit more on, um, what work the, the engineering design was complete for the. The other recreational areas and stuff like that. So where are we in the process of the review of all of the recreational areas? And, um, making them more ADA accessible.
Um.
To make you work for it.
We did well. Remember that, remember the Girl Scouts gave us, gave us a list. Um, when I say we, I mean Scott Lapp and his staff, we're able to, to hit off a lot of the low hanging fruit. Our next step is to re-meet. Uh, with the Girl Scouts. Um, my thought was. To have them, they, they, they did an assessment of all of the parks in town, the recreational areas, but they didn't do it. Um, with the green. So my thought was maybe have them do that as well. Um, just a thought, but our next step is to meet with them and, and prioritize.
Okay.
But the town as a whole is really starting to push that needle in a positive direction.
Yeah.
In making everything more accessible.
I appreciate that. Um, the next one that I had announced on here is the under balance and open spaces, residential and economic development. Having been on here, John and I, the longest here, we were part of this four town initiative that has been many years since it's been going on. And now we're on the second name change and I still have seen nothing. From this committee that is benefiting the town of Talon for the amount of money that we, we spend. So. I'm highly encouraging the idea that if anybody comes forward for more money. There is a big review on what exactly is Talon getting? Because other than, like I said, now a second name change.
Uh, I would concur with you on that. Um, I have great faith in our planner, Dave, however, um, but I would, I would ask him his thoughts on it and, uh. And follow his guidance, but agree, uh, what do we get?
And then the last thing that I have is, um. E there, under the town budget, your last line, I intend to use my communication infrastructure and experience, facilitate a transparent budget process in twenty twenty three. Talk to.
Well.
Budget process, not only isn't held, but we get very little engagement from people until it either fails or passes. And then, you know, it's. And it's the same five people complaining about the same five things and starting the same, you know. Ring and roll about what we're failing miserably at for this month and then succeeding wildly at in January. So how do, well, teach me everyone, what are you going to do?
I was going to say the same thing to you. I have not been through a budget process. Yeah. However, you know, I'm not shy. Uh, I do have some, uh, communication ability and I have a established. I brought in an established social media footprint, uh, with me, uh, to which I use to my advantage and, and, and I would use that. There, I would like to add, you saw the report that Lisa provided, uh, the financial update. That's another thing that we do for the, the transparency. I, I just, as a side note, I did not put it in there, but. As we work our way through the process, I have, if you guys have ideas on how I can communicate. I'm happy to use them and then use my infrastructure. When I say infrastructure, my social media footprint, uh, to all of our advantage.
So what we've found in the past. Us three, especially here, what we've found in the past is. We've pretty much, God, I don't even know what haven't tried. We've tried eBless. We've tried social media. We've tried meetings. We've tried, uh. Notifications. We've tried what, like mailings, everything and. It's a pretty disengaged populace until tech comes. So. I know we've come to judge, Steve, Steve and I had multiple conversations about how do we engage? How do we get people more active involved in this? And the heat of it's coming upon us now. So.
Another thought I have. Uh, in that, watching it of ours, it became fairly polarized as well.
Oh, yeah.
And so I would continue my approach of trying not to polarize, trying to stay. In balance with everybody and smooth things off and. Take some of the thorns away because they got fairly thorny as we all witnessed, um. The first time around. That's by no fault of ours. That's by where we are as a society. But I think we're turning the bend, uh, all of us. Uh, in really de-escalating, especially here in town. I know with between the Democratic Town Commission, Republic. Republican Town Committee, I'm sorry, um, uh. We have an event coming up together. It's going to be a fundraising event. It's going to be a fun event and it's really about togethers. Um, but I think if we. Communicate well. Show, try not to be polarizing. Uh, I think we will have some success, uh, this year and I'll do everything I can, uh, to communicate exactly that. Um, or as best I can to communicate at a level.
Okay. That's it for me.
Sorry. Anyone else additional questions or commentary? Council member?
In terms of. Just to kind of riff off what Tammy was saying, you guys were just saying, um. In my professional job, I had worked with communities. For state budget issue. But, uh, one of the things that we found. Works pretty well is, um, an activity called the Budget Game. We ever came up with a better name for it. Um, and it's, uh. You know, you bring, uh, it's an in-person event, right? Where you have, people have to come in and that's been. That's, that's a challenge, right? But it's an activity that is very different than someone sitting, standing on a stage or. Um, doing a presentation. It's about sitting in small groups. Um, and looking at the various budget items to prioritize. And getting the citizens to really understand how, um, budget decisions are really hard. It's not, you know, it's not easy, right? People are like, well, just do this. Like, I just want you to, you know. Make sure that the garbage gets picked up every week. Well, that's great, but you know, how much does that cost and how do we balance all that? Um, and. There are a number of communities across the state that have had success, you know, in this, uh. Project. So if you want to talk more about it, I'm happy to. Share my experience if you.
No one's ever defined me as shy, so I. I would look into anything like that. You, you know, a community that's doing, doing it well and I'll, I'll check with, with through CCM and Croc if they know other communities that, that have some good ideas.
Yeah.
Uh, I'm happy to.
Yeah, all right. I'll, I'll, uh, I'll see what I can put together and, and talk to you about that.
What are we winning?
I know.
Hopefully a transparent budget.
Right.
Free participation.
Yeah. Citizen buy-in, um. I don't know if you want to talk about this now, um, but. In, uh, item three on recreational opportunities, there's a, a little. A note about expediting a new part-time position in the rec department. I mean, I know that to me, your town manager. It's also on the town manager board. I don't know if you're ready to start talking about that, but, um, it seems like there's a lot going on with rec, so.
There is. So, uh, it's, it was going to be brought on, I want to say like in April. Yeah. Uh, and this is a matter of moving up, uh, a, a couple of months. Lisa's assured us, we, we've saved some money and, and salary. Uh, on a few levels, uh, and more to come. Uh. So it, it's just a matter of moving that, uh, forward a little quicker to get some, improve some hell there. He's getting pretty busy. We anticipate, uh, with the ARPA. Funding of the rec programs, uh. We anticipate a, a, a busy season and we don't want to bring that person in right when all those programs start. So I think it's a positive, uh. For the town and for our, our very successful rec department.
Yeah, absolutely. I think that's great and look forward to hearing more about it. In terms of well water, uh, I know we approve a, um. A consultant report. In our. I don't know. I think we're coming up on the six week. Uh, deadline for that report. Have we heard, has that come in yet? Or do we know when that's coming in?
Yes, they're going to provide you with a report. I don't know when, but they will.
Okay, yeah, I, I think, um. It was presented to us that we were told it was going to be a pretty quick turnaround. Um, and I think.
It has been. Our attorney's happy with it, but again, that's, that's between him, but they, they present that to you.
Okay, great. Yeah, I'm, I'm, I know a lot of us are very interested to hear how that, that's going to work out. Overall, I, I did want to, um. Give my commentary that I was very impressed with how you put all this together for us. Thank you very much. Um, I think it was great to see, you know, each of our goals laid out like this with. An update on how things were going. I thought this was, um, packed full of really good information without being dull. So, thank you very much.
No one's ever described me as dull. So, no, I would, I would say thank you to my staff. A lot of them I needed to, um, tap, tap them specifically for obviously some of the detail, but, um, yes, um, and I'm happy to do it. And, and my plan is. Uh, to keep this updated.
Yeah.
Uh, moving forward will be easier for me. Uh, so we ripped it all out and now I, now I can just jot down notes and keep it updated and, and provide to you when you need it. Still, I know, uh, the, the chair had asked me to do something along those lines, uh, early on, so I'm happy to have it. We'll go.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions, council members?
Only one other on, uh, to expand on. What, uh, Katie was saying with the water, when you get that report from the consultant, what is the clearly defined next step in the mind, Tammy?
I don't have that in front of you right now, uh, Tammy, um.
I think. You have to decide that. Let me put it that way. I don't want. You have to decide that. They'll, I'm sure they'll present you with options, uh, whether to progress or move forward, uh, with them is my guess.
Okay, um, and then. From the perspective of the town water commission, um. You know, Connecticut Water is the one that goes basically down Old Post that would handle the Old Post, um. Mountain Spring area, and they would also be the ones that would handle anything that was on the, the Crystal Lake area. I know we had talked in the past about what was the, the fate of Holland Water. Um, and we haven't really heard anything from Connecticut Water in regards to quality issues. Over here. Now, because Talon Water is ours, that's why we pursued the grant and the, um, consultant review, review, et cetera, because that is our own. Local utility, but is the Water Commission doing anything to talk to Connecticut Water about expanding services?
Not as I know at this point.
Would that be the Water Commission that does that? Or would that be?
You're saying that, that they would expand their line?
Well, that, they would have to. In order to handle any of the issues that we have on Old Post, Mountain Spring, those areas down, um, up. Seventy-four.
Yeah.
And then down the Crystal Lake area, like to encapsulate the fire station and the issues that are further down. All of that has to be done through Connecticut Water. That is not a Holland Water, um, company area. So have we started any conversations? Is there any interest?
There. We are, we are in discussion and on a bi-weekly meeting to include today on Talon's selling to Talon Water to Connecticut Water. Uh, we are not a water company here in the town. Talons selling to Talon Water to Connecticut Water, uh we are not a water company here in the town and the water commission um certainly has. Um lost some inertia and they. Didn't want to sell it as I'm told a long time ago or years or a few years ago and now realize that that might not have been the best move as there's a lot of um. Infrastructure costs that lie in our future uh that the town uh. Just cannot uh. It's. The town is not a water company and it's gonna be some great expenses uh ahead for us and a lot of difficult decisions to retain uh said water company. Uh so we are on a bi-weekly to move forward, we are at a point now where myself. Bev, uh Mike Wilkinson and and our attorney are gonna look at uh next steps. Uh in that regard and with a meeting scheduled, not next Tuesday, but the following Tuesday to twenty-seven. Uh prior to that, we'll meet again with our meeting with council and see where we are on that. If there's going to be expansion in any part of. Town, um we would need it to be Connecticut Water as opposed to the Talons uh.
Okay, so that uh leads me to the question of. If this sale were to go through. Right and Talon Water were to be purchased by Connecticut Water. What does that do to not only the quote we already received? Um for the work and the vineyards which was under Holland Water, what did that do to um? To that process, because Connecticut Water is not eligible for the grant. That we applied for or the loan subsidization program that we apply.
That that's something we would have to uh look at and work through uh. But again, if if there were, water were to be brought out there, would Connecticut Water would, I think, would be the ones that would have to handle that project and we would literally have to hire staff just to handle a water project. Uh of that size if we opted not to do a community well uh up there um. So yeah, all things we have to consider and 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 when we when we have those questions, then I'm sure that we put on council's plate uh to determine the answers to them.
They probably add next steps, at least from my perspective is when the report comes out, it would be probably prudent to send it to. Beavens, the water commissions that they're aware and if there's any. Discussions or plans for potential action or even having a joint special meeting to have that discussion, have a very realistic conversation about these next steps, I think is prudent.
Yep.
Uh. If there's one other thing I could mention. If you ask me, yeah. Um concerns that Councilman Micio mentioned about the Connecticut countryside, this what's going forward that I know I think it's in one of our communications that the undercut. Um that there was an invitation um for the four-town group and it could be in the next month, the thirtieth, is that right? So at the end, I think of the next month, there's an invitation for a regional event regarding this four-town um economic helping group, so. I think that's beneficial. Uh there's one other point, I think, I'll open the floor to the other questions or comments, councilmembers, for me. Concludes conversation. But I just concur with Councilman uh Councilman Murray's. Mentions of how thorough everything was, great job, it was very detailed and hoping for bigger and better going forward too.
All the thanks. I will accept none of the thanks.
The rocket.
Yep.
We have another line in June, right?
Yes.
This is June to June and December.
Yes, really shortly after the the budget cycle. Is completed and finalized, hopefully will be. In another in another review.
That's true.
So that'll be good, it'll be good benchmark to see how things are going. Alright, that brings us to eight point six, which is appointments to vacancies on various reports and commissions. We have three rear appointments and one new appointment, so I would entertain a motion to approve those. As outlined in eight point six A through eight point sixty.
Someone.
So my councilman Micio, is there a second? Second, if it comes to you to check. All's in favor, say if I'm saying I.
Hi.
As you know, it's old business, we have none, so I am pen is the report of the town manager.
Again.
Kick it away, Brian, if you want to give a quick update or if you want a quick breather, I know I think.
I do not.
Members.
Okay. Let me run through a couple of things if that's alright.
Yeah.
Um just just to keep you uh notified, prior to any any snow event, um I meet personally with um. DBW and Public Safety on uh what to expect, where we are preparation-wise, really just touching base to make sure. Uh we're set, staffing, any events, you know, anything that we need to know, uh just what I know we've never discussed it, but I want you to know that's. That's how we handled it in previous uh in places where I was, uh just to have a a real solid. Conversation prior to each and every event. Uh cybersecurity wise, I don't know if I had mentioned this already, uh Noreen has connected with the National Guard and they're going to do a. Uh scrub down of our uh cybersecurity around um emergency management, around uh. Uh registrars and and elections, just everything, uh to see where we stand, uh she attended a uh. Uh cybersecurity event with the emergency management and homeland security la- uh earlier in the month. Or was it early, the later last month, I can't remember. Um and they offered that service, we're taking him up on it as it happened today at this the CCM Connecticut Municipalities. Uh meeting, they encouraged all the towns to consider taking advantage of the National Guard cybersecurity stuff, we are ahead of the curve uh and already on it. Um touching back on some things, the festival lights, the 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 tree lighting, uh I I want to thank all the staff, the PCC, DBW. Talon Fire, the cert team and the the state police for everything and and making it smooth and all of you. Uh that attended as well, uh that was fantastic, as I said earlier, we're we are boosting up that uh. Uh Recreation Department employee uh by a couple of months or a few months. We have two openings in DPW that were, we had applicants for, they're in the process of trying to get them on board now. Uh the Assistant Human Services Director uh informed me this morning that she will be leaving uh town service for a dream job. Uh so we'll look at some strategies uh around that uh moving forward.
That more ready?
That would be more in, that's quite a loss. Um. As you can see, the collection of revenues in line are better than where we've been, that's that just keeps, we do really well in this town on that um. Solar projects, you know, we're it's it's. It's not as easy as you would think, uh we're looking at um, we're looking at a lot of things, I'm really. You know, uh or Bev and Megan are really getting tired of me asking, you know, not why can't, why can't uh. But they're doing great with it. No, I don't think I have any other notes, that's it. I'm here for questions.
Open the floor to questions from councilmembers, Councilmember Mary.
So I um sent an email, I had some questions regarding the fiscal. Report in the back and um. Thank you, Lisa, it sounds like, thank you, Brian, that a lot of my questions did get answered. Um so those get put into the minutes, right, Steve?
I think so, yeah, yeah, that'd be.
Make sure that happens tomorrow.
Yeah.
Um. I. Thank you, I uh Lisa gave us or gave me anyway the balance for the tax evasion fund. Um and the CNRE. Um. So Lisa, I'm I'm sorry, I'm still a little bit confused. On your notes for charges for current services. Um you say we're estimated to be on target. Um. The current revenues exceed the budgeted amount by twenty-two thousand three hundred eighty, this amount should be reduced by two hundred thousand nine hundred forty-two. So I think um my confusion is. How can we reduce twenty-two thousand by two hundred nine, two hundred thousand? I think that's really the crux of my question.
I know it's it's very confusing um. And 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 I'm gonna try to explain it the best I can. Many, many years ago, we set up the ambulance reserve fund, which is a capital fund, separate fund altogether. However. The town bills for ambulance calls and services um that we respond to or send. AMR out to or call for paramedic assistance, things like that. So there are fees that are charged for those services and the town collects those fees. Now. Part of those services have to be paid for with some of those fees that are collected, you know, um to pay for the paramedics that come out. The um the outsourced services. So what we do throughout the year is we collect. All of those fees in the general fund. However. Not all of those fees stay in the general fund. What happens is there is thirty-nine thousand one hundred and forty dollars, that's the particular budget. For those revenues. That is money set aside to help pay for some of the. Secretarial administrative costs um for. Our secretary over at the fire department, so it offsets the mil rate for what is used. Um for her services and for her salary. So what happens is the only amount that stays in the general fund as of the end of the year is thirty-nine thousand one forty. But in the meantime, we have collected. A little over two hundred thousand plus so far. Um. For those, for those fees. So right now, if you were to look at one of our revenue reports. The numbers are inflated because they include that extra couple hundred thousand dollars worth of revenues that are gonna come out at the end of the year. We don't account for them separately in a in the different fund. We we collected all there, it's been that way for the last, I don't know, fifteen years plus. Um before me, but um. What we do is we we pay out the paramedic fees that come in um for the bills for those. We, at the end of June, we settle up everything and move. All of those revenues into the capital fund for ambulance reserve. And bring that balance down, so each year, each quarter, when I usually do this financial report. I always put a caveat on the financial statement that says. Although this revenue says you have three hundred thousand, you really don't. And this is the amount it needs to be reduced by, and I try to do the analysis, taking all that into account. So if someone were to look at that account, they would think, oh, we have all this money, what do you mean we still? You know, have to collect more and and that's not the, you know. That's not the case because that money really doesn't belong there. Um. Does that help?
I I think what really helped me just. So you know, is is you talking about how um. The. Collections are two hundred and forty thousand. Today. Um and need to be reduced by two hundred thousand, that, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Um and the other question I had was about public safety um. I I I could be remembering this incorrectly and I apologize because I didn't go back.
You remembered it correctly.
Yeah, I I feel like at the beginning of the year when we were doing the budget um that. Uh we were worried that this line item was going to well exceed what we had budgeted for it. And now uh you're saying we're gonna have a uh savings of a hundred fifty thousand on this line item. So I'm just not sure how that happened.
What happened was as of the end of um last year, when we were developing the budget. The state police provide us with projections of what the the cost would be. Um. That was based on a full police trooper force. Of many officers at the top of the range, they're they're paid the highest salary because they had been there for many years. At that point, we were not aware of officers leaving and we were told that. That the um certain, they were working on fringe benefit costs, everything else, and that there was a chance that there may not be enough money. When I was developing the budget, I decided to do the wait and see rather than asking to add the money into the budget. So we, we. Took that chance and and I'm glad we did. So what has happened now is that after the budget was passed, after the year was started, we had two officers leave, one retired. And um the other one moved into another um unit. He got a promotion and moved moved on. Excuse me. Those two were paid very high salaries, they were at pretty much close to the top of the range. That created substantial savings because they were replaced with lower level, you know, younger staff. That are paid much less. In addition to that. The state um. Worked on the fringe benefit rate. And we started out with a fringe benefit rate around seventy-eight point something percent. Now for years, that fringe benefit rate has been close over a hundred percent at times. It's been, it did come down, we were advised by the state that it was gonna be seventy-eight point something percent. And after the year started. They had their, I guess, their negotiations and adjusted it and it came down to about. Almost fifty percent rather than seventy-eight percent. So that on top of. The savings from the troopers leaving. Creates close to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. In um expenditures that will not be expended for that purpose. Now, there may be some needs within the organization going forward for certain things, um some of that may be used. For other things, but I I don't see all of it being used unless. An emergency comes up, so what would happen at the end of the year? Is those funds, depending on where we are with other expenditures, other revenues, will be turned back to fund balance.
Great, and I I did um. Thank you very much for giving us this overview, I think one of the uh. Most notable takeaways for me was that although our current fiscal year budget. Uh did call for using. Two hundred sixty-eight thousand dollars from fund balance, that right now it's anticipated. That we will not be actually withdrawing any money from fund balance, but there'll be a small deposit of what, about forty thousand? Thirty-five, forty?
It's all going to depend on how the year ends, I mean, we we're just starting winter now. Um you know, we were kind of on low-end budgeting for different supplies for snow removal and things like that. I think it it's, you know, by the end of December, de- definitely by March, we'll have a better feel. For things um. So so time will tell as far as that goes.
Well, thank you, I know that was the big talking point when we were working on the budget.
And and the amount of um fund balance that was used, it was two hundred thousand for fund balance. The other sixty-eight thousand was for a restricted funds for debt service because. We were trying to help phase in the cost of debt as it would increase based because of the Birch Grove project, so. We had moved some money from the debt service fund and just kind of offset it um to help. Alleviate the uh impact on mil rate for the new debt coming on. So that that's what was there, so. You know, time will tell, we'll see if we'll be using anything but. It lucky and fortunate, excuse me, um. I think it's a good thing we don't have to use the own balance.
Thank you very much, Lisa, I appreciate.
Welcome.
Really answering all my questions as always.
Thank you, Lisa, any other questions for councilmembers regarding managers' report?
Um so Brian, the first page of the of the report talks about the assessors' office and personal property declarations being sent to um the businesses.
Yep.
I am wondering if you can talk a little bit about how we have done on standardizing that review um for our businesses. First, second, um what have we done or are we doing to educate the small businesses? On the filing and if they don't file, how it is estimated and what their process is for that, because um. I got countless calls from small businesses last time this occurred. Um about being uh taxed on things that they didn't even own, because it was just assumed that their business would own it, so.
Uh so I have not taken a grander look at that part yet, beyond having a discussion uh with Jason after hearing. The same types uh of complaints, um he addressed them along the lines of. People aren't always forthright and honest um or timely with their uh reporting to him and that the town has to. Uh do something when someone doesn't report uh or clearly underreporting what they what their uh. Values are, that he has to take action, I can look at the standardization, I I do have concern with that as well, I have brought it to him. Um and I'll look at the education process too, I don't know if we have that on our website.
I don't think we do right now, but I think if we're sending. I don't think we do right now, but I think if we're sending out the uh the declarations.
Some education material, would it might help?
Would be very helpful, especially for the small businesses, and if there's an appeal process, if they don't send something in. And they're um hit with an expected, this is what we expect you to have, what's the process for them to be able to adequately appeal that?
Got it.
Alright, any other questions?
I have one more.
One more comment, go for it, or a question for me?
No, uh, I love the engagement, I'm so happy working here uh with everybody, so um, I I think I'm the luckiest person every day I walk out that door. Uh, I love the questions.
They haven't gone through the budget yet.
I haven't, yeah, I can't wait, uh, so I I really enjoy it, so I I thank you all, um, I don't want any of you to leave uh council, so, but I understand that'll happen. And then I'll like even better, so.
Okay, thank you, Brian, that brings us to eleven, adoption of minutes, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes that has laid out one point one.
So.
Is there a second? You know, for discussion, all's in favor, say goodbye, saying aye, aye, me and Miss, I have twelve as correspondents to council.
We have uh six emails come in uh since November twenty third through today. Uh, one on walkability and public transportation, one on daycare center tax abatement. Uh, another, which was an invitation to the four town summit, which was mentioned earlier, uh, an invitation to the tree lighting, which happened. Uh, last week, uh, an invitation, oh, sorry, um, another email on solution free cooking. And an email on contaminated.
Yes.
I don't know what any of you guys, but we are getting spammed the hell out of us. Um, is that something like IT before had done something a couple of years ago where they kind of reduced that, but. Man, I'm like.
Your, your near town email?
Yeah, like spam.
That's odd, I get absolutely nothing, I can tell you, we were under siege yesterday morning. Uh, with cyber attacks, uh, and IT uh between Noreen and town of South Windsor did an excellent job. Right up until this morning, there was disruptions defending that, uh, they've made some changes. If uh, if you go overseas, you might not be able to access your email. And I proved that. Forget about town business when you're there, please, uh, so. I know we've been under attack, we've done an amazing job, I don't know about the spam, but I'm I'm happy to ask, I can tell you, I don't, I get none.
Really? I'm deleting like five plus a day.
Nothing.
Really? As a chair, because I like.
You put your email out there on certain things, like is it attached to your Facebook page?
No, it's not, but like people find me, I have to forward stuff all the time from a legislative perspective, but no, like these are. I did get more emails when I was chair, but this is like, let me, let me see if I can find some of the deleted, like I'm deleting like five plus a day.
If I get one a month, one a month, man. I'll ask Noreen.
Utility band, billing management, and the role to become this new portable heating things, amazing boomerang. This is all just, that was just today, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, nine, nine today, no, nine today. Yesterday, probably about six or seven, like I'm getting split, I'm stamp sending me this stuff.
Noreen did a great job, I'll ask her.
Okay, alright, I didn't knock those everybody, I think it was, clearly it was just me.
I do plenty in my junk inbox, but it seems to be well circulated.
I don't need that, I don't need that either, I'm not buying a boomerang, I just want cloth to jump.
Do not.
I got the same one today.
So it's, so it's older, maybe it's long, longer term email address.
I don't know, man, but I thought it was like everybody, I mean, like they'll draw the spam.
Alright, that brings us to thirteen, Chairperson's report, uh, they have one person show up for the chair hour, very robust conversation about energy efficiency. Uh, they usually send in communication to the council on a lot of these topics, um, but they did have some requests for information, they're curious about who had built the. Uh, current solar array over near River Park and what is the status of that project and any. Plans to expand to other open spaces, similar, I think you covered that, Brian, in the past.
I would, I mentioned it as well, uh, they have talked out any opportunities to work with CROG on.
Uh, regional composting, we're trying to get composting in the town, like I think it's West Hartford.
Oh, yeah.
Like the, the, that's just compost materials, um. But no, they they just generally had some conversations about, you know, avoiding natural gas, um, you know, use of certain chemicals and water, you know, this, it was, it ran the end, it was a very robust conversation.
Uh, can I pause you for one second, Mr. Chair? I forgot to mention that uh Bev, Megan and I, was that it? Went on a field trip around town, um.
Or Dave.
We did a field trip around town, uh, to include a, a bunch of places, the dump, really, Campbell, parts Campbell farm. Uh, in in all, in evaluating where we can put uh solar created places uh to do solar, and it's and it's an ongoing. Uh, at the same time, I looked at some other things that are in capital of improvements, uh. While while I was in the neighborhood, but we were really going at it, I forgot about to mention the field trip, that's all.
So I think in tandem with that too, I think it's Councilman Murray has brought in the past, they also mentioned the possibility of municipal. Relocated charging stations for electric vehicles, whether it's at town hall or.
Their grants.
Yep. Alright, and that is it for me, so for that, we'll move on to fourteen, just communication, actually, sorry, one other thing, we did get a communication from. State Representative Nuccio and Senator-elect Gordon about having a, we have a meet and greet or a. Free legislative discussion, um, hopefully at maybe our next meeting, if that is in the works, or we have a. I think we have a pretty light meeting for the second one outside of the six month review process for you, and I guess I can also share that with the Chairperson's report is. That we are having a special meeting next Tuesday, do the first steps of that, and I think one subsequent one the week after, um, that's all pending. But yes, we have a request for that, so that'd be something to consider, but.
It got hairy, get trying to get everybody in the room at the same time, so I went and met with, I I made an appointment with with uh Senator Gordon. Uh, and met with him in my office, just the two of us, one on one, uh, ahead of that, so, but I'm happy to, let's do it.
Alright.
I'm sorry, Steve, what was the twentieth again?
Uh, twenty two, just sent out the email, there's an invitation for, it's a special meeting, it'll be fully wrote executive session, but it's for the town manager review, because Brian's sitting at a six month marker. So I'll be at seven PM. And then after that, you know, we'll be working with SGR again on that, and next week, the week after, and we'll be setting a date for the. Follow up for, based off of that first meeting.
And we're still moving on the twenty seventh, or?
That's the intent, that's the intent, maybe, well, if we have, if we might have a lighter meeting, and that would be an opportune time to have the legislative update, and then. Maybe have an executive session within that week or in a period of time, depending on how the first meeting on the twentieth goes, the coordinate, we have the full review. Brian's looking forward to, I can tell.
I am, actually.
Alright, that brings me to item four, that brings us to item fourteen, rather, communications petitions from council members. Uh, one I wanted to share, and actually I shared it with, I believe, uh, Town Manager Boy and Vice Chair Regan, I had seen the CCM stability pledge. Um, it seems to be a fairly informal process when I communicated and reached out to CCM about it, so essentially a one page document, there's a website, I'll share with council members. Um, but if you have any interest in signing on to it, you can fill it out, put in your hand signature, title, in which town you represent, and you can communicate it back to CCM and. I think they're doing kind of promotions of the towns that have signed on, so. I've just encouraged that the members of the council, especially going into, I think it was alluded to, the budget season can get pretty hairy and pretty contentious, so. Stepping in the good foot forward on that would be good, so that's my petition to everyone. Is there any other petitions or communications, Councilman Nuccio?
I I just want to say, I know there was a huge fire around a few days ago, and um, just want to commend Fire Department. For helping out over there and the surrounding towns that helped, and um, I just wanted to make note of that. I must spend a really long day, so.
Yeah, no, definitely, once we've seen the news, it's good that Red Cross helped out those families, no surprise how intense it was that was in back in our houses, but. And they also went to Coventry to do a pretty involved house structure fire, I saw recently as well, I think it was like the day after, shortly shortly after that, except it's been a rough. Start of December for them.
Yeah, so, but that's all I have.
Alright, any other additions, Councilmember?
I I just wanted to uh give a shout out to Bruce in the rec department. Um, rec basketball started this week for the kids and uh. In my house, it was a huge success, uh, which I always appreciate, but I I also sat on the. Leechers with other parents who were very happy, so.
Numbers are way up.
Yeah, yeah, um, yeah, but Bruce had it all planned out and he managed the parents and he managed the kids and. He was doing, as always, a great job, so I just wanted to give a shout out.
And Councilmember, any other communications or petitions? I think the other thing I also had to be talked about the budget, just as a reminder, the budget schedule is now, uh, maybe there are some additional meetings, like the uh. You received a memo, so there are a few meetings coming up on Tuesday, the seventeenth of January. There's probate, assessors, library, collecting, collecting revenue, Thursday, the nineteenth of January is public work, semen services, the registrar voters. Monday, January twenty third is the Fire Department, Town Clerk and Law Enforcement, and Wednesday, the twenty fifth is planning. Building Recreation Finance Administrative Services, but there's a full calendar out there, so as I'm trying to promote it, keep an eye on your dates and. Have the time available for the various hearings and discussions.
These are for, these aren't council meetings, right?
You can go to them.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can still go, okay, there's additional meetings, if you have any interest.
Thank you.
Seeing no other communications or petitions, we'll move to item fifteen, which is public place of participation. On any subject within jurisdiction out council with a three minute limit. You're on Zoom, you can hit the star nine, your mobile device or the scan function, or if you're in the public, you can approach stable.
I'm good.
Alright, going once, going twice. I entertain a motion to adjourn at eight twenty three PM. Remove by Councilman Nuccio, is there a second?
Yes, I'll say.
Executive of Council, very, all's in favor, say goodbye, saying aye, aye. Have a great night, thank you, everyone, take care.